Want to call to the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District, Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. May we have the roll call, please, and quorum establishment?
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Here.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Benz. Trustee Benz.
Benz here, Benz here.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, present. We have a quorum. The time is 5:31 PM. And for the pledge of allegiance. Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah. Item two, adoption of the agenda. 2.01, do we have any additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we do. It's a clerical error, item 12.06, under fiscal impact. It should read the total cost of $27,000, not $28,000.
Thank you, I'll make note of that. And do we have a motion to adopt with the adjustments?
Echus, I motion.
We have a motion by trustee Echus, is there a second?
A second.
I believe trustee La French, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Echus, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item three, closed session declarations. We'll be taking items 3.02 through 3.05 to closed session. Item four, our public testimony before closed session. Public comment period for closed session items only. Do we have any audience members, Chris, or ADTA and CSEA representatives?
We only have one at this time, and I believe it is for closed, or for open session, so it would be the next, or the next.
Thank you. Item five, reset for closed session. Do we have a motion?
Echus, I motion.
A motion by trustee Echus, is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
We have a second, is there any discussion? Hearing will call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Echus, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. We are recessed to closed session, the time is 5:35 PM. So, we will move on to item six, reconvene, open session, procedural business. We'll have the call to order, so we have the roll calls.
Trustee La French.
Here.
Trustee Echus.
Here.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, here.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, present. Quorum is established, the time is 7:43 PM. And item seven, closed session report. At this time, I'd also like to request to move item 14.1 for the vote, and to enclose as a part of our report now. 7.01, our announcements of reportable actions taken during closed session. Our closed session action, in closed session, the board took action to accept the appointment of Michael Kraus for the position of Chief Business Officer. It was motioned by trustee Echus, and seconded by trustee Turner. A trustee Heinz, aye. Trustee Benz, aye. Trustee Echus, aye. Trustee Turner, aye. Trustee La French, aye. And the motion carried five point zero. So, we would like to welcome and congratulate Michael Kraus for, as our new CBO. Welcome. Yay. And we also want to move item 14.01, which I just mentioned. And I'll need a motion, and this is to approve the contract for the position of Chief Business Officer effective September 8th, 2020. The contract of Michael Kraus. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion, Echus.
A motion by trustee Echus, do we have a second?
Benz, second.
We have a second by trustee Benz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
Aye, La French.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, no.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries four point zero. So, it's moved by
Four point one.
I'm sorry, four point one, thank you. Four point one. So, it's moved by trustee Echus, and seconded by trustee Benz, to approve the contract of Michael Kraus for the position of Chief Business Officer effective September 8th, 2020. The oral report of the recommendation is as follows. The proposed contract is for a term of three years. Salary, $183,730. Health and welfare cap of $17,000. 12 days sick leave. 24 days of vacation per year. $475 monthly auto allowance. $1,000 reimbursement for life insurance. And 8% tax sheltered retirement contribution.
President Heinz, could you talk about what step that salary is on?
That is, salary is on step five. And, thank you. And so, again, we want to welcome Mr. Kraus, congratulations, welcome. And I don't know if you're on, on the Zoom still, but we just want to extend. Okay, a wonderful welcome to you, and looking forward to wonderful things in the district. Moving forward, also in closed session.
That was it, President Heinz, in closed session.
Thank you.
Now, the expulsion.
The expulsions will the expulsions are later in the agenda.
Item nine.
Okay.
Yes. So, we're moving into our public testimony time. Do we have any, I thought you said we had one, Chris?
Yes, we do have one public comment for, for open session. If you're ready, I can go ahead and unmute this, I can release now. Kimberly, we're ready when you are, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Madam President, and Board members, and good evening Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, and Cabinet members. I just wanted to jump on here real quick, to talk a little bit about what we all already know what's going on. The word of the year, what I say to my students, is crazy. Just kind of, we're in crazy times, and I let them know every morning that, you know, something could go wrong, something could go to the right, or to the left, wherever it is, but we're all in this together. So, just keeping them all on track as much as possible, and just knowing that we're here. It's especially useful when something happens with my computer, and they can see that I'm also struggling as well with any internet problems, or moving from one app to the next. I'm taking a page from what Dr. Mitchell told us in the PD day, just as far as making sure that culturally, getting those strategies in there, and understanding what's happening behind them, the spacing that they have with their families. And we even made sure we had a share day, where some people shared their little brother or sister. So, that was also something that was nice, and, you know, they got to see a little bit about me. I shared my, one of my snakes with them, so they got to actually see that. They didn't get to see it in person, maybe a little bit later this year, we get back on campus, we'll be able to do that. So, that was also nice. As well, I, I believe that Victoria McGathen is also taking a page from Dr. Mitchell. We are checking in on each other weekly, and it's, it's kind of funny, because we never want to leave our staff meeting. We know that we have the MOU that says 45 minutes, and then Mr. Verduzco will leave, and we'll stay on. Like, today, we were on for probably another hour. And we have our other collaboration meetings, where we're on for about two hours, just talking about the different things, and laughing about the craziness that's actually happening. And, and again, I just use that word crazy, because the kids can understand it, and if they know that we know that's happening, it makes them feel a little bit more comfortable, so with all the ups and downs and the internet issues. And the last thing I wanted to say, well, second to last thing, I wanted to tell Ms. Benz that I heard her say, as far as forgetting to unmute her kids. I've done that so many times, and I've told them, who's going to answer? Anybody can answer me, and they're going, can you? So, we always have a good laugh, and I'm, I wait for a long, I'm looking, and I'm like, why is no one answering? And they're like, they can't. So, I go, I go through that, and they think that it's so funny. The last thing is another, bravo to Ms. Perry, I, from music. She has, you know, again, my, my word of the year is, she has a crazy situation, where she has to have these students coming in and out, onto the different Zooms. I love it being fifth grade, where the students were only able to receive band for music, when fifth grade. It stops, I think, at third, and then fourth and fifth graders were only able to have band. And we have been trying to, we've been fighting for it, I guess the program didn't allot for them to be able to just go to music, those that did not want to do band. However, in this platform, they're able to go in, and she's going to be talking about music history and music theory, and they're going to be hearing some different things they haven't heard before, and it's just great. They were remembering some of the music notes that they had learned two years ago, so our children do retain things. So, it's not, you know, we always say there's a gap in that learning, they do retain things, so they haven't been with her for a couple of years, my fifth graders, but they knew what she was talking about, and they appreciate it, so it made it well-rounded. As well, I'm looking forward to, I know that when I was in third grade, and I still have one, the little recorders that they were able to play. I still have mine, and from third grade, it was a few years ago, but, and I can still play on it. So, I just want to say, I'm hoping that that is still in the budget for them to be able to get. I think they're like $2.50, and that would be awesome for the fourth and fifth grade, I think those third, fourth, and fifth that are able to have those. So, I just wanted to give kudos to her, and to the music. I think my time is up, so thank you very much, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any ADTA or CSEA representative?
That is our only public comment for the evening, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Item nine, student discipline, expulsions, and readmissions. 9.01, child welfare in attendance, student readmission case number 2019-2020-05. I need a motion to approve the recommendation.
Trustee, I motion. I approve that, I'm motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation to readmit students.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion by trustee Turner, and a second by trustee Echus. Is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
Aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. 9.02, child welfare in attendance, student readmission case 2018-2019-26. I need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to readmit the students.
I'm motion to approve.
Oh, go ahead.
Recommendation to readmit student, this is trustee Turner.
Have a motion by trustee
Second.
And a second by trustee Echus, is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. 9.03, child welfare in attendance, student readmission case 338035. I need a motion with the board to amend the action to be reinstated, a conditional reinstatement, to be reinstated with a behavioral contract for one year, and review.
I second that, trustee Turner.
And Heinz's motion with amendment. Well, if there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 10, public hearing and sunshine proposals, we have none. Item 11, adoption of the minutes. 11.01, board minutes approved as written and order filled, the regular board meeting of August 11th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Trustee Echus, I motion.
Again.
Benz, I second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 12, our consent agenda, we're taking items 12.2 through 12.14. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, Echus, I'd like to pull 12.04 and 12.14.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve, go ahead.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda minus 12.04 and 12.14 for further discussion.
Thank you.
I second.
And we are now open for discussion.
Okay, I pulled this item, this is academic services, approve the 2021 consolidation application for categorical funding.
Holly, I'm sorry. Holly, I'm sorry. We have to approve the items?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to rush, I'm sorry.
No worries.
On the items that we motion on. Minus 12.04 and 12.14. And we have a motion by trustee Turner, and it was seconded by trustee Echus. If there's no discussion on the other, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Heinz.
Trustee Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 13, items removed from the consent agenda. And that was 12.04 and 12.14, so. Now, now you can go, Holly.
Okay, I'm sorry. 12.04, academic services, approve the 2021 consolidation application for categorical funding. I'm going to go ahead and motion for this.
Okay. And is there a second?
My second, trustee Turner.
All right, we're open for discussion.
Okay, thank you. I had a question for the superintendent. On the protected prayer certification, what exactly does that mean? Are we allowed to have prayer in our schools? Or have the parents pray with maybe staff or students at the prayer pole on prayer day? Can we have prayer groups in our schools? Well, I, I would like a little more clarification on this.
So, so this is, we are, we are required to protect the right to pray at school, and so this is a certification that we are, that we are doing that. Dr. Williams, you want to speak on this a little further?
Sure, Dr. Mitchell, as you stated, this is a protected prayer certification statement. And the statement basically says, the LEA hereby assures and certifies to the State Board of Education that the LEA has no policy that prevents, or otherwise denies, participation in protected prayer in public schools. So, this is just certifying that we don't have a policy that prevents that from happening.
Okay, so if we don't have a policy, do we need to make one? Or is it just kind of open-ended, and parents and children can pray at school? I, I just kind of wanted more clarification.
Well, it's not sanctioned by the school, it's not something that we are organizing. This particular application and certification is just basically saying that we have no policy that prevents it from happening.
Yeah, yeah, so we, so it is illegal to have a policy, to receive federal dollars, to have a policy restricting prayer in public schools. So, we should not have a policy that says you can't pray at school.
Okay, so is that what this is all about, saying that we shouldn't, or we need something? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I think we lost Dr. Mitchell.
Uh-oh. Let's pray we get him back.
Yeah, it looks like he dropped out of the meeting, if we could just
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
And he should be back in.
Okay, maybe Ms. Williams can answer that. So, are, are they saying that by voting on this, we're saying we're going to have a policy? Or we're understanding that, I'm not quite sure.
Trustee Echus, there are several different certifications as a part of this consolidated application. This is one of them, and it's just basically making sure that we are assuring, and that we're certifying to the State Board of Education, that we do not have a policy that prevents this. So, as Dr. Mitchell was, was saying, we don't want a policy that prevents this. And that means we're in, we're in compliance by not having a policy.
Okay, so if a board member votes on this, are they saying that, I don't know, in layman terms, that we don't want a policy? Or we're just acknowledging that we don't have one?
Hey, Holly, what, what I took, took this as was, if a student wants to pray, the school can't say like, no, you, you can't. You know, that, that, that a student is allowed to, to pray. So, we don't have a policy saying they cannot pray.
Yes, I
That's how, how I took, took it.
Yes, yes, that, that is a, that is an understanding, as far as I know, that is like a state law, that you can't forbid a child to do that. But, as far as I know, they do have regulations on teachers, staff, and parents. And I know over the years, that parents and staff have wanted to pray with the children at the flagpole on prayer day. And I remember over the years, parents not sure if they're allowed to, or if it's a problem. And that's why when I saw this, I got kind of excited, because I thought, is it now saying that adults can now pray? Or is it, I don't know, that's, that's where my confusion is. I know children can do it, but I don't know about adults.
Adults, adults cannot sponsor during school class time. You can't have like Christian clubs and prayer clubs, that's outside of the work time, and you cannot require students to participate in it. So, this, this is just certifies that we are allowing voluntary prayer on a campus, including, including adults. So, adults can't sponsor it, or, or, or require it in the classroom.
Okay, but they can still, they can pray on their own, right, basically?
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't have a policy that says you can't.
Okay, and by approving this, it just, it just shows that we do not have a policy, and we're not going to create one, we're like leaving it alone.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because in order to get federal, in order to get federal fines, you have to certify that we don't have a policy against this, yes.
Okay, interesting, all right, thank you.
Ready, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 12.14, Holly.
Okay, I pulled this one, because I thought it was only proper to vote for this in open session, and have maybe a discussion if anybody wanted to discuss. This is 12.14, classified personnel, classified management, new hire. From what I understand, this is the hire of the new PR person. And just, just for, I don't know, information, at the time the, the board approved this position, I of course voted no, because I just didn't think the timing was right. I thought it was too soon, too fast, and with the new soup and COVID and everything going on, I just, I didn't really think this was a position that we needed at this time. And then, of course, money, you know, the budget, I'm concerned about that. So, I just wanted to put it on record that that is why I voted originally, not to have this position. It's nothing against the person that's applying for it. I've met the person over the phone and heard them speak, and I think they're very qualified, and I think they'll do a great job. But I just wanted to know that I did originally vote no for the position, and I, I'm still not very comfortable with it for, for just different reasons. Other than that, you can go ahead and, and vote.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? 12.14.
I motion to approve 12.14.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Benz, is there a second?
Second, La French.
And if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Nay.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye. Motion carries four one. Item 14, new business. We covered that 14.01. Moving on to item 15, table and unfinished business, none scheduled. Item 16, policy introductions, updates, and readings. 16.01. Approved second reading for board policy. 12.8, 4212.8, 4312.8, employment of relative. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee La French, is there a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Echus.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee, aye. Motion carries five zero. Item 17, the superintendent's report, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for falling off the meeting for a few minutes there, my computer ran out of juice, and so. My computer ran out of juice and so, so I'm on the cell phone working just fine. I hope everyone sees and hears me okay.
Yeah, we see you.
I, I just want to, I just want to send a huge compliment to our, our staff working so hard to make distance learning work. We know it's so challenging teaching online. We see how challenging it is just to have a business meeting online. All the things that can go wrong seem to go wrong. And when you got little ones in front of you and, and it just becomes more high stakes. And so I want to compliment our, our teachers that are doing a phenomenal job. I've been able to bounce into several classrooms and look over the shoulders of some of our teachers working on our campuses and just seeing phenomenal work. I also want to compliment our classified staff who's worked so hard to complement what we're doing with the distance learning and helping us to pass out textbooks and, and workbooks and helping us to get information to parents and, and helping with food distribution. Want to compliment our nutrition service workers who have done a phenomenal job feeding this community in these challenging times. We also are continuing to distribute food on, on our Mondays that's from the district office. Those lines are healthy and long and we're out there in the heat. I just want to compliment our, our staff. I want to compliment also the district cabinet team and our, and our, and our district office leaders who are doing so much to support these efforts to provide a high-quality education to our students in these challenging times. And I just want to, I just want to let the public know that we're continuing to monitor this crisis. I'm on weekly meetings with our county superintendent, with health officials, with the Department of Behavioral Health, sorry, with the Department of Public Health, I mean, sorry, as well as my peers in the High Desert in terms of superintendents, as well as my peers and superintendents across the state. So we're monitoring numbers every day, every week. We're looking for opportunities to see how fast we can get kids back. I do want to, I do want to say that again, our value during this time is to keep our staff and students safe and healthy and their well-being is the most important thing to us. And so I have no intention to rush anything premature and have our kids and staff at risk. And so you have my commitment for that. And, and of course, the board will have healthy discussions as our country begins to heal and create opportunities, potential opportunities for us to go back to school. But, but you can rest assured that our staff and our students and our parents' health and safety and well-being is of utmost importance. I want to thank the board for joining me yesterday. We had a little photo shoot in front of the district office highlighting our, our two new electric buses. We've drew various grants and opportunities in the state. We've had an opportunity to purchase two electric buses. And they, they go about 100 miles on one charge. And we'll be able to put those buses in service as soon as we're able to get kids back to school. But I want to thank the board for joining me for that photo op. All, all of the whole board was there. We had a chance to get in the bus and, and check it out. Beautiful vehicle. The driver would not give me the keys though. So I was looking to take it for a spin. But apparently I'm not qualified to drive the bus yet. But so hopefully I'll work on that and be able to drive that puppy, the dream of mine of driving a bus. And so also as a board, I just want to let the board know that I was able to deliver some chill towels to our classified staff that have been working in the heat. These last couple of weeks have been brutal. We've had our classified staff and our teachers going back and forth between auditorium and classrooms and our site leaders running back. And so, so a board on your behalf, at the, at the suggestion of, of our union leaders, we have a joint union leaders and cabinet meeting twice a month. And we talked about doing just a small, just showing a small token of our appreciation for their work and getting us set up. And so I personally drove to all of our schools in one afternoon and delivered some chill towels, other towels that you wet and kind of stay cool. You put them around your neck and head. And, and so I got some great compliments and emails from staff. Just a small token of our, of our, of our enormous gratitude and appreciation for, for your commitment to these, to our families, to each other. And so I, so I just want to compliment our staff again. I, I, great compliments from our teachers this, this, this evening around stressing, taking care of each other. Let's continue to be patient with each other as we're learning something new and how to conduct business in a new way. Let's, let's just give each other grace as we're learning things. Let's give our parents grace. We can imagine the tremendous load on our parents and now they are co-teaching with us and learning new skills and learning how to engage with teachers with their children online and trying to figure it out while at the same time still trying to raise families. And so we know we're in a tough gig. And so the, the great thing about crisis is that it pulls us together. One of the things that I'm seeing is just a huge, the collaborative culture of our district is really growing organically in this crisis. Finding that teachers are sharing tips and tricks and sharing strategies and approaches and, and resources and programs and apps that are helping to better engage our children. And I just want to keep, continue to encourage that. Tell us how we might better support that. And, and again, lastly, I just want to give a big shout out to our school principals. We know you're grinding and you're working hard and you're trying to make it happen. And so just want you to know on behalf of our cabinet as well as our board, how proud we are of our full staff. And so with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
You. Item 18, we will not be recessing to close session again. We'll move forward to item 19, Governing Board Members Reports and Announcements. We'll start with Trustee Turner.
Hey, thank you. First, I would like to welcome our new CBO, Mr. Michael Kraus. Thank you for accepting the position. Looking forward to your expertise and, and your leadership in that department. Again, and also I would like to welcome our new Public Information Officer, Stephen Quintero. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Quintero.
Quintero. With this appointment, I know that we are facing, we will be facing some difficult challenges with our budget next year. And, but I really feel that our Public Information Officer will, will, will market our, what we do here in AEST and get our enrollment up. Right now, we're down, we're down many students. Dr. Mitchell, he didn't give us account of what, what our enrollment is at this point. I hope we can go back to.
Yeah, year over year, we're looking 300 plus from 1920 to current.
Okay, so I know that once we market our district and show our community what we're doing, our enrollment will go up because our homes are being built throughout the High Desert and especially in our community. And I feel that once that information is out there and our website is updated to show what we're doing here, the hard work that you're doing. And we cannot get that unnoticed, the hard work that we're doing here. And I know it's going to cost some money, but in the long run, that money will be recouped, recouped because of our enrollment. And people will be looking, and, and our community will be look forward to sending their kids to our schools instead of putting them on a bus, sending them outside the district. I want to commend our teachers. You are amazing. You know, I, I go, I look in on my granddaughter every morning and I see what she's doing. And I know, listening to your comments, Ms. Smith, you know, we're in this together. And I just appreciate everything that you're doing on a daily basis, you know, for our children because I know that you want them to succeed. And even though it may be a little difficult for us, our smaller children, our kinders, you know, I know that your heart is there. And I, and I want to say to continue, you know, to do what you're doing. I know it can get frustrating at times. On this Zoom, it's frustrating. You know, we haven't been together in a while. I want to say to our CNA staff, to our bus drivers, to our clerical staff, to everyone, I appreciate everything that you're doing out there to keep this district floating. And moving forward to our superintendent, thank you for your leadership. And moving our district forward. Yesterday was really a nice time to get together, to see everyone in person, to celebrate our new buses. I want to, I want to really give a shout out to Lori McMillan for initiating that grant to get those buses. Sometimes we don't go into who's doing what and give the recognition that we should. And I really appreciate what she's done again, and I've said it before, initiated to get the PPE that we needed. She did that early so we can have what we need in order to be effective. And, and bringing, when the teachers come back to their classroom to make sure that they have everything that they need, you know, the disinfectant that is needed during this trying times. So with that being said, I want to just congratulate everyone. I know it's hard. You know, I asked Trustee Benz as a teacher before the meeting started, is it easier to teach online and be in front of the classroom? And she said, no, it's not. And I, and I, and I understand that, you know. And I just wish you the best. If you want to make a recommendation as what we could do to make it easier, by all means, do that. And we're here for you. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. Again, thank you to our new hires and looking forward to a good working relationship with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ekis?
Oh, okay. Yeah, to piggyback on Ms. Turner, I agree with everything she said. Also, just the people handing out the food, you know, people you just don't think about that are out there in the heat and dealing with the public and trying to get everything out to everybody. I noticed that when I was trying to help them a little bit over at Columbia School about a couple of weeks ago when they were giving out the materials for the kids, the laptops and the books. That's a lot of work. And if you're out there in that sun, that's, it's almost unbearable. I just can't imagine. So, you know, besides thanking everybody at the district and the teachers who are doing a great job, you know, thank you, the kitchen staff and our employees, our janitors, everybody. Trust me, you don't go unnoticed. We know it takes the whole team to make this whole thing work. So you're very much appreciated and I wanted you to know that. On the other, on the other foot, I did want to kind of say something about us going back to school here. I have noticed that a lot of the schools have lots of cars in the parking lot. And it's exciting because it makes me feel like school's back in session, we're back to work. I understand it is a lot of teachers and staff at the schools that are doing the district learning from their schools or classrooms. I think it's wonderful. I think it's great, especially for the children. I have been reading up a lot on what it's doing to the kids psychologically, being shut down and having to wear the mask and the distancing. It's really affecting them and, and not in a good way. And that does concern me. And of course, I, I, you know, as a, as a public, you know, servant, I have to watch and listen to everything that's being said out there. And I have been getting texts and phone calls and, you know, emails. And I'm listening to what people are saying out in the public. And I actually heard a mother yesterday, which really kind of surprised me. She said she's so busy doing her own schooling that she has no time to help her children do theirs. And when I heard that, it just kind of made me stop for a minute and think, we don't really know the situations going on at the children's homes and how they're learning and what they're going through. I've also heard some real horror stories where teachers are actually, you know, seeing what's going on in the children's homes and it's not very pleasant. So, you know, and I could just attest to being a latchkey child myself growing up many years ago. My mother worked. She was a single parent. I would have had nobody in kindergarten. I was five years old. I would have had nobody to help me with the computer. I wouldn't even know what a computer was, you know? A lot of these kids have no idea what a, what a laptop is, how to turn it on, how to operate it, how to maneuver it. And if you don't have anybody home helping you, like an older brother, sister, parent, you're lost. And I just have this vision in my head of, of five and six-year-olds sitting there in front of a computer with no help and they're, they're trying to maneuver this. And it's scary to me. And I also know we have parents that need to go back to work. And, you know, life needs to go back. So just having said all that, I just want people to know that I am, you know, very empathetic. I do see the other side to all this. It is sad, it's scary. I feel like a lot of children are going to fall behind. And that really concerns me a lot. So just me personally, just one out of five board members, I would really like our district to start looking into another phase, maybe in a month or so, moving a little quickly on trying to get us back into school. And by saying that, I would like to see something where the teachers feel comfortable, the students, the parents feel comfortable about being in a classroom with each other with distancing, masks, whatever it takes, so we can get back to actual hands-on teaching in front of a teacher in a classroom where children feel safe. And I know a lot of these kids, they think of school as their second home. I know they think of their teachers as a second mother. And to have that support being young, I really feel that's very crucial to teaching and educating our children. So my heart just breaks for those, those people out there that are going through that. And I know there's a lot of them. We, we can't dismiss it. We can't hide it. It's there and it's reality. So, you know, I just want those parents and those students and those teachers out there to know that I, I am in favor of that, moving forward, trying another phase soon where we can start getting back to actual teaching in person at school sites, in classrooms. And, you know, the people who don't feel comfortable with it, we can still keep doing distance learning for them if it works for them. But for the ones it's not working for, I would really like to start looking into another phase to go into that direction. So other than that, you know, thank you all for just, you know, hanging in there, doing what you're doing. Again, you're all appreciated and let's just keep moving forward, you know? And if you need any help with anything, please contact somebody in the district, you know, who can help you. And I know there's lots of us. So, you know, just keep us in mind when you feel like, you know, you, you just can't do it or it's not working for you, we're all here to support each other. So again, thank you and have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Benz?
So somebody shared a meme that one hour in Zoom is like seven, seven years on earth. And I agree with that. So, but, yeah. But teachers are an amazing group and they pull stuff off all the time. And I know that you're going to pull this off. And our kids, they will appreciate the effort you put in them, you know, because they, they know. So I'm going to keep my Zoom time short and just thank you. Keep it up, you know, reach out to your friends, reach out to your family, self-care. Take care.
Thank you. Trustee La French?
Well, so much to say. I just want to say thank you to the entire team for AEST. I really appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I want to send a special, you know, shout out to the teachers. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. When that first week, when I was even as a parent trying to figure out where do you get in, where do you fit in, where do you go over here, you move over here. After those first couple of days, that transition just went so smooth that I was like, we are rocking here, you know? Teachers are in there, the students are happy, everyone's laughing, everyone's talking. You know, the teacher is like, you know, I can't get in, can you hear me? The students are like, I can't hear you, can you hear me? It was just so wonderful to see the smiles on their faces and to hear the teachers being happy to see their students. You guys are doing a wonderful job under the circumstances that we're all under. And I know that, you know, as a parent, as you know, for my daughter, you know, everyone is so excited just to see you guys and you guys are so pumped and the children are happy. It feels really good. And I know that it's not, wasn't a smooth transition, but even for this to just be, I think, what, a second week, everything is running. The little glitches that have to do with Zoom and this, that, those things are going to happen. But the effort that you guys are putting out, it's going to show in the end. And I'm very proud to be a part of this district, to see our teachers go in. And I see the cars in the parking lot when I pass by. And I go see, you know, as a teacher, I would much rather be in my classroom as well to be there to support and have all my stuff around me that will get there. It may not be this school, this year, maybe next year. However, you know, our social distancing is so very important to keep us all safe. But you guys are doing a fantastic job. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap up by saying ditto to everything that's been spoken so far. And I'll just wrap up by saying ditto to everything that's been spoken so far. I'm excited about the new additions to the team tonight. Just super excited about what is happening in our district and how we're moving forward. I'm excited about the leadership, excited about the teachers, all the work that's going forth. I have three over at George and they have so much patience right now. The staff, the teachers, Carol over there, the principal, helping, you know, just even something simple like connecting to the class dojo sometimes. All these little things that happen, but yet it's all flowing. It's flowing, I agree with everything that trustee La French just said. It's all flowing and the kids are excited, they're still engaged. And, and for me, that's the greatest part. So I'm just really grateful and thankful for what's happening in our district. And that's all I have for tonight. And let's see, so if we have nothing else, we will move to adjournment.
I motion.
Ekis, is there a second?
I said second.
Trustee Benz, and if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Ekis?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines?
Trustee Hines, aye. The time is eight thirty PM. We are adjourned, have a good evening.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.